Okay, so now that that's updated and the public can come in, we'll go ahead and get started. So Ellie, can we have a roll call, please?
Tracy McBride.
Here.
Tracy Marquez.
Here.
Tracy Diaz-Lokum.
Here.
Tracy McAvoy.
Present.
Tracy Lawson.
Here. So, welcome everyone. Thanks for your patience as we work out the little pickups that we have here on our virtual meeting. It's welcome back from spring break, and we do have some members of the public that are joining, so welcome to you. You are muted when you join the meeting. And just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded. We do have Spanish translation available, although it doesn't... how many people are out there? So, what's the number that... do we want to put in the chat, the number that they can call into for Spanish?
Yeah.
And then can somebody translate that, just to let people know?
Oh, you can do that.
Si les gustaría noir la información en español, marca el número que van a ver en este pantalla.
So the board will hear public comments as usual, and in order to address the board, please fill out the Google Doc that's linked on the Board Agenda. You can also go to bit.ly/ all-cs-d with a lowercase k and the number 8, r-c-s-d-k-8. We'll put that in the chat also. Do include your name, so that we know who to unmute when the time comes. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person per topic. If the item you would like to speak to is not on the agenda, you'll be called to the podium during Item 5, Oral Communication. And if you are speaking on an item that is on the agenda, you'll be called on when that agenda item is being addressed. And just to note that because we are meeting via teleconference, all votes will be by roll call. With that said, we're going to move to... we have some awesome students to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Great.
So let me... I want to...
Come on. I can't get the... I need this thing to move. There we go.
Okay, so Janet, I'm going to mute everybody, and you're going to unmute yourself.
Okay.
Oh, jeez.
Hello, my name is Haley Latoura. I'm in second grade, and I go to Clifford Elementary School.
Hello, my name is Katie Latoura. I'm in fourth grade, and I go to Clifford Elementary School. Please join us in the pledge. Put your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome job. Thanks, girls. I hope you were here to see it. Let's see, how do I stop share? Okay. Moving on to 3.1, Changes to the Agenda. Are there any changes? None? Is there a motion to approve?
Hang on, I have to unmute people.
So moved.
Okay.
Dennis, sorry, Dennis made a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Alisa, you're muted.
Second.
Okay, so we got...
Second.
Okay. So I have Dennis and Maria. Ellie, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Tracy McBride.
Aye.
Tracy Marquez. Here. Tracy Diaz-Lokum.
Aye.
Tracy McAvoy.
Present.
So it's aye or no?
Aye.
Tracy Lawson.
Aye. Okay, thank you. So Ellie, I don't think... We have any public comments?
No, I did not receive any public comments.
And then did we get the link put into the chat?
Give me just one second.
You do have the link in the chat. I see.
So if we have no oral communication, then we can move on to 6.1, Bond Consent Items. It sounds like the chat has been disabled for the audience, so they aren't able to access it.
So I thought that's what we wanted to have.
So I just provided the link in case someone has a stupid card. You can submit a request.
I'm getting a ton of feedback.
Right.
I can't hear what they're saying. So if you have two devices on right now, make sure one of them is muted. Okay. So we are on the consent item for the bond program. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. I'll second it, so still you can move it.
Cecilia and then Alisa?
Yeah.
Okay, a roll call vote, please?
Tracy McBride.
Aye.
Tracy Marquez.
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Lokum.
Aye.
Tracy McAvoy.
Aye.
Tracy Lawson.
Aye. Okay, Item 7.1, the Budget Study and Update. Take it away, Bond Team.
We are ready. This is the budget update? Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening Superintendent Baker, President Lawson, and members of the board. It is with great pleasure that we are here tonight to present to you, for your consideration, another budget update. With me are Will Robertson, the Program Manager, and Sarah Garrett, the Program Advisor. So just to say a few things in the beginning to let you know that we are determined. We have a determined team and leadership. Generally, the program has been and continues to function well, on schedule, and with contingencies that allow moving even farther down our long list of priorities. Our bond revenue is fixed and liquid now. Construction industry is grateful and hungry, and prices are down somewhat. The program is mature, with functioning protocols and team. As you know, we have the largest projects yet to build. Taft, one of our big three, has just bid, and the prices are below what we budgeted. Next large bids include John Gill and Garfield. And the medium-sized projects soon to bid include Roosevelt, Lloyd Cloud, and Clifford. We have put effort into two vital facilities components. The Energy Management System upgrade, which controls all of the heating units in the district, as well as the lighting, and then the security camera systems design. You will hear more about these from Will, and know that these are very important systems for our students, teachers, and staff. With leadership direction and agreement, we are recommending holding on the solar work for now. We hope to see a favorable environment later this year in panel supply and pricing, as well as labor pricing. We plan to revisit and reestimate the project and review the performa with the Bond Team in the future. As you can see, this leaves funding for the solar energy systems in the program contingency. I am a conservative, rational program leader in a conservative, rational district. Together with the Bond Team leadership and Bond staff, we're still budgeting with contingencies and proceeding with both caution and focus. The program is successful, and we are still working hard to continue that path. Sarah will give us a brief overview, and Will will provide more detail on planned expenditures. I hope to conclude by asking you to approve this proposed new Measure T program budget. And with that, I would like to let Sarah take it over here. Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent and trustees. It's a pleasure to be here again. As Dawn stated, the program is functioning well. It's a mature program. The protocols are in place. The staff is well-oiled, and the big projects are now in our workforce. Since October, we have had a couple of changes to the program revenue, all in the positive version. The CBO has updated interest revenue projections to $2 million total. That's an increase of $1.2 million since October, when you adopted the last budget. Additionally, the CBO notes that the underwriters' discount did not apply to one part of the Series C bond issuance. So she has credited back to the program $125,000 total. That means that the new program total is $211,310 and a few pennies.
Sarah, could I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
Shouldn't we have this schedule shared, so all the attendees can see it? Do we not have the ability to do that?
We... there was an exchange before the meeting. Did we decide to do that?
Dennis, we're doing it actually all verbally. So we're going to speak to all of the points and, you know, kind of adjust the process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, we're looking at the program revenue summary, and since October, the October total was $209,688,310. So with the total additional of $125,000 plus $1.2 million, the new program total revenue is $211,310. On your sources and budget summary, remember that when we project project budgets, what we're projecting is a look backwards, which is we put actual expenditures in there, and those get trued up every six months. They get trued up more often than that, but we formally make sure that we're up to speed on all of those every six months. Also included in a budget is, in addition to the backward look, which is actuals, we look forward, and every single project has been reviewed and updated for future projections of what it will take to complete those projects. So every project budget has been scrutinized and adjusted, and each project, as Dawn mentioned, has appropriate contingencies that have been updated. Those things aren't changing, and that happens from now through the end of the program. We always look to the end first. Specifically, let's look at the last three columns. The total pro... first of all, this is a balanced budget. The expenditures equal the revenue, except for some rounding errors, which are typical in these programs. And so far, don't total more than $3. The next column from the final column of the totals is the Board Reserved, and of course, that is still untouched and stands at its initial $4 million. We act like it's not there. And then the third to the right, that is part of our kind of healthy checkup on the program, is the program contingency. And you'll notice that that is somewhat larger than it was in October, and that's primarily due to two things. One, we have some project funds that have been transferred from individual projects into the program contingency. Two, we have left in there, the solar project funds have not been transferred out, since that's not a decision that you have made yet. So for now, we're looking at some favorable pricing because of the current economic environment. However, we're not changing our budgeting strategy, and we're not changing our contingency truing up at all for this program. We're continuing budgeting, just like we have. We are and we're seeing, even last year and continuing into this year, the last few months notwithstanding, we have been seeing a decline in escalation. So you'll see that we are moving some funds out of projects appropriately and into program contingency. Will is going to give us more information on individual projects, and he will go through in great detail, actually, not great detail, some detail, on all of the projects for you, and you'll be looking at that program sources and budget summary sheet. Thanks, Will.
Yep, absolutely. Hi, guys. Diving right in, the main projects that we're going to focus on today are the Project Liberations Movement from Projects to the Program Contingency, the Energy and Security Project, and the Program Contingency. And so I want to start by speaking to Adelante School Modernization Project. Construction is completed, and our team is recommending moving $180,000 from the project to the Program Contingency.
3150 Granger Way.
3150 Granger Way, thank you, Dawn. Formerly known as Adelante School. Recommending moving $180,000 from the project to the Program Contingency, and this was primarily unused escalation contingency. I'm now going to speak to the Energy and Security Project. So we want to collect all energy and security systems in this project. We're proposing adding approximately $1.3 million moved from the Program Contingency to this project. It will cover several installations of equipment and two design efforts. So the equipment or hard construction that would be covered by that $1.3 million move would be exterior lighting connections to the Energy Management System. And we have a confirmed cost of approximately $175,000 for that item. And then we have the full district-wide Energy Management System upgrade. Our confirmed cost for that work is $370,000. The designs will be an intrusion component of the Energy Management System, confirmed cost of $275,000, and the design of the security, district-wide security camera system, with a confirmed cost of $260,000. The two design expenditures are just that. They are designs that will allow us to get clear scope and pricing for cameras, servers, Siemens proprietary equipment, conduit and wiring, and other necessary components that we can bring back in the future. Also, this budget includes an appropriate contingency of $200,000. Moving to Hoover, construction is in progress at this site. The project bid under budget, and we're recommending moving $500,000 out of the project to the Program Contingency. The project still has appropriate contingencies built in. Kennedy School, construction is in progress at this site. The project bid under budget, and we are recommending moving $1.5 million out of the project to the Program Contingency. And this project also still has appropriate contingencies built in. The McKinley Project, construction is nearing completion. We're recommending moving $300,000 from the project to the Program Contingency, and this was primarily unused escalation contingency. North Star Construction is complete. We're recommending moving $100,000 from the project to the Program Contingency, and this was also primarily unused escalation contingency. Moving on to the Taft Site, construction is in progress at this site. We're just getting started with the new full project. This project bid under budget, and we are recommending moving $500,000 out of the project to the Program Contingency. This project also still has appropriate contingencies built in. And then I will speak to the Program Contingency. The approximate $3.1 million addition to the Program Contingency is a result of the sum of additional revenue that Sarah has already reviewed with us, along with the movement out of projects to the Program Contingency, minus the movement of approximately $1.3 million to the Energy and Security Project. Does anyone have any questions before we move on?
This is Alisa.
Yes.
So I do have a question. I don't know if now is the right time to talk about it or later, but I'll just bring it up. So Dawn, in your opening remarks, you mentioned that we were going to wait on the solar, and then Will, you said the same thing. Can you... I may have missed something, so could you talk a little bit more about why that is? I know we hadn't approved exact projects, but I thought we had approved actually the expenditures for moving forward with the solar. So I think I may have missed something around that. So if you could just say a little bit more about why we're waiting, what the issues are, that would be helpful for me.
Well, I think what we approved in the last budget was the ability for us to take a look at it and what the cost may be. We have not brought that cost back to the board for approval. I think right now, we're just only being cautious right now, just to make sure that everything flattens out and gets what we would think to be normal, and then we will come back and ask for that.
Okay, I think what we had seen is we had seen an estimate of what you thought it was going to be, or what we had available. You're right, we didn't approve. So anyway, that was the first I think I'd heard about the wait, so it's just a matter of wanting to keep it in contingency, given all the uncertainties.
Correct.
But it's not that we're... Okay, because I hadn't... is there some issue with panels being more expensive now, or labor being more expensive, or something like that? I just haven't heard anything about that.
Yeah, we're just looking into it. We're trying to properly develop, properly develop the project budget, so that there are no surprises. And then, as Dawn mentioned, you know, once we're comfortable with accurate pricing, or, you know, or once we decide to release an RFP to try to get actual pricing, we'll bring that back to the board for discussion.
So Alisa, the other thing is in our twice-a-month bond meeting, where Janet and I, Dr. Baker and Priscilla, and people on it, they came up with a very rough estimate, where the $6 million that we were talking about was closer to $9 million. And so given the $9 million, we decided that we really needed to hold off, because that's significantly more. Again, they don't have final numbers, but that was the thinking.
Right. Okay. Well, at some point, it would be interesting just to see, you know, I personally would like to see the analysis then, that like, what does $6 million get us? What does $9 million get us? That sort of thing, just because it has been one of our goals to basically, you know, move for energy savings, as well as cost savings out of the general fund longer term. So anyway, I sort of get why, you know, you might want to continue to do analysis, so... Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll do that.
Absolutely. And so if there are no additional questions, I am going to hand it off to Dawn to conclude.
So before you tonight is the approval of this budget update, and I ask for that approval. Thank you.
So Janet, before we vote, could... I know we said we didn't have questions, but I had a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so for the audience's benefit, we have a twice-a-month bond meeting, and Dr. Baker, Priscilla, Akino, DeChocó, who's the CBO, Janet Lawson and myself, and all the Bond Team really climbed through all these numbers. So we've had a number of meetings where we spent hours and hours and hours going through the detail, and you're kind of seeing the high-level summary. So from the bond, you know, Janet, myself as board members, and Dr. Baker, we're comfortable with what we've done, and we feel like it's a balanced perspective. It's not too conservative and, you know, not taking enough money back, but it gives us flexibility to do what we think we're going to need to do. So I know, Janet, if you want to add anything?
No, I don't have anything else to add, but I just... that's a really good point for the audience to know that it kind of looks like we just went boom, 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 but that was many, many, many hours of looking through numbers and stuff. And even beyond, I know, you know, Will and Sarah are working really hard on, and Dawn on, all of these numbers and keeping everything in check. So, you know, to the Bond Program staff, I just want to say thank you. You've been working extremely hard to make sure that we are on time and under budget, or on budget, but we've been under, and I appreciate that, and I know the taxpayers appreciate that too. So thank you for all of your hard work. Does anybody else from the board have any questions or comments?
Yeah. I just wanted to say thank you to the Bond Team also, and also putting more dollars in the contingency fund, because hopefully, when we're at the end of the project, there'll be other items that we can add back in for other items that we had originally thought we couldn't do. So if it keeps under budget like it has been, and Dawn and the team, along with Will, doing such a great job of bringing it under budget, we would have that opportunity to bring some items back for our school sites. So I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
So do we have much?
I'm sorry. Just one other comment from what John just said. That's a good point. So when we do get to a point where we feel more comfortable, and we know we have that contingency to spend, and we know we had a long list of projects, I would ask as a board, you know, that it's fine if the Bond Team comes up with kind of recommendations, but maybe they could come to the full board. We could have a conversation about what the priorities are with the expenditures. Because I know, you know, Dennis and Janet, you get the opportunity a couple of times a month to really delve in, but I think the other three of us don't, so that would be really helpful for me to kind of appreciate and understand as we move forward. And then, of course, also just the public to have an opportunity to comment as well.
Yeah, that's actually something that Janet and I and Dr. Baker would not do, that we're keeping the list, but it has to be a board decision.
Great.
So you would see the whole list.
Okay. And then I just want to say thank you very much to Janet and Dennis, our board reps on the Bond Committee, and thank you, you know, John, Priscilla, Dawn, Will, everybody, just for all the work, hard work you guys are doing. Really appreciate it very much.
And Sarah.
Yeah.
And Sarah, yeah. Sarah, who has Will Robertson. That's what threw me off. I was trying to say Sarah, and then I... anyway.
And so, Alisa, I do want to... oh, sorry. I do want to mention that at the last, the last Budget Update presentation, we brought the top of the prioritized list, and so we're hoping to be able to continue moving down that list, and we will... we're absolutely excited to, you know, share that with you once that time comes.
Great. Yeah, that was a really good process of what we did last time. So something similar would be fantastic.
Great.
Thank you.
So if there's no more questions or comments, do we have a motion to adopt this budget?
So moved.
Maria? Is there a second?
Second, Cecilia.
Cecilia, thank you. Eliana, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Tracy McBride.
Aye.
Tracy Marquez. Tracy Marquez.
Is it aye?
Tracy Diaz-Lokum.
Aye.
Tracy McAvoy.
Aye.
Tracy Lawson.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Bond Team. Love your work.
Absolutely.
So we're moving on to item 7.2, recommendation for the approval of construction agreement with FED controls for the 2950 Fair Oaks Avenue site. Were there any, I don't know if the bond team wanted to speak to that or if there were questions or comments on that one?
Only if there, only if there are questions.
Correct.
No questions.
Okay, if there's no questions, is there a motion to approve?
This is Dennis, so moved.
Alisa, second.
Dennis and Alisa, thank you. Have a roll call vote, please.
Justin McBride?
Aye.
Jesse Marquez?
Aye.
Jesse Diaz-Loco?
Aye.
Jesse McAvoy?
Aye.
Jesse Lawson?
Aye. Okay, thank you. So we are moving on to.
Thank you, guys. Those are our last items. All right, bye, guys.
Moving on to item 8.1, discussion of the temporary rule for paid leave under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Great to see everyone. I wanted to bring to your attention a new act that was recently put, recently instated, April 1st through December 31st, so it's temporary. The attachments to the board memo are items that we sent out to employees describing the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, which is new and in effect now. Essentially, it allows for paid leave entitlements different than an employee's sick leave for items specifically related to events surrounding coronavirus, specifically recommendations for isolation, somebody who was advised from a healthcare provider to self-quarantine, somebody who's experiencing COVID-19 symptoms and is seeking a medical diagnosis, caring for an individual, caring for a child whose school or place of childcare is closed due to COVID-19 specifically, and other similar conditions. And so there's a, one of the attachments is a one-page, nice, quick chart that describes the different scenarios. We got some feedback from our employees, really appreciative that this information was sent out. Two employees have reached out to us already regarding childcare concerns because they're classified employees that are being asked to work but are not able to work because of childcare concerns. So that is what has been in fact just in the last couple of weeks. But I'm pleased that we do have an opportunity to address, as you know, we've been working through various scenarios regarding COVID-19, but I'm pleased that there's something that's in effect for it. What I don't know right now is who's paying the bill for this. Unfortunately, I can't bring that information to you right now. I don't have that. We've been asking our attorneys who are still trying to find this out. So I don't have a clear answer for you right now whether there'll be a reimbursement for this paid sick leave or how this will be managed, unfortunately. So anyway, the total amount of the leave is up to 12 weeks, but it can be a variation of full-time paid sick leave or a two-thirds allotment up to a certain amount of salary for employees that are in varying different situation. And then of course, a part-time pro-rated allocation as well. So that's the gist. I wanted to know if there are any questions regarding this topic. It is relatively new to us, so I'll answer the best I can. There was an FAQ that we put together. It was 48 pages, but we narrowed it down for public school sectors, and that's what was attached here to the board memo as well.
So Wendy, one thing I wanted to mention is, you know, on the county calls that board members sit on, today they did mention, well, they've been mentioning it regularly, but they've been talking about the childcare they have available for essential workers. And Menlo Park School District actually has a childcare center that's being funded, and I forget which group is funding it, but they have space and they're trying to get the word out that they actually do have space for essential workers. I think we could track down the process for getting ahold of them. And I think they're actually even said that there might be opportunities for a sliding scale on the cost of the childcare. So we should, I think, probably just make sure we're aware of those and maybe you're already aware of them and providing those out to employees.
Right. Yes.
There you go.
Yes, no, thank you for that. I have been hearing in part of our HR leader group around the county, there are districts that are certainly discussing childcare in general for their employees, but also perhaps to be a location for healthcare workers to have a childcare, you know, essentially makeshift facility put in place. So thank you for that note. I will reach out to Menlo Park. They didn't include anything in the group meeting we have, but I'll make sure and research that. Thank you.
Wendy, they're using Champion. That's what they're using. They're using Champion.
Okay, thank you.
Were there any other questions or comments on this? It's just a discussion item, so there's no action needed.
And this is under this item too, if you wanted, this is under COVID-19. It talks about COVID-19. It's all part of it. Is there any questions you had in regard to COVID-19 that you have as board members attended different types of committee meetings, found out other information from other entities regarding COVID-19? This is a time where you could share that with the rest of us. Okay.
Alisa, it looks like you're trying to talk. Are you trying to say something?
Yeah, you know, it's funny because I've got my phone muted and the computer muted, so it takes me a minute to sort of connect up. So I think there's some, you know, there's things we could talk about, but when I read the discussion item, it says discussion of temporary rules. So it feels like it should really be around the rule and not just generally about coronavirus. I don't really have anything urgent and, but I know, John, I've been in a few conversations with you this week, and actually Maria, John and I were on the two-by-two-by-two committee with the high school district and the city. So there's, you know, some various updates there. I don't know that any of them are urgent, but I do want to make sure that.
You can do it under reporting out.
Yeah, I don't even think we have a report out.
We don't have that on the agenda.
Agenda.
That's true.
So fortunately, I don't think any of them are super urgent, but we have a meeting next week, right? So let's just make sure, you know, you and I discussed yesterday. Let's just make sure there's a standing agenda item so we can share out, just, you know, talk about coronavirus in general. I think probably all of us have been getting comments from parents and community members, particularly parents, community members. And I will just say that Dr. Baker and team have been really working hard on addressing all the various things and more on that to come, I guess. Right?
Yes, indeedy.
Yeah, I think because this was a special meeting for the bond budget adoption, that's when it was on. So we'll definitely have the standing item on the next meeting and upcoming meetings for, just to discuss.
That would be helpful. That'd be great. Okay, thanks.
Okay, if there's no other questions on this item, we can move on. So there's nothing on item nine for consent, so 10.1 is the adoption of resolution 23.
Okay, thank you. So every time at this, every year at this time, we are considering our employees and whether we will need potential layoffs. And it's interesting, the timing sometimes doesn't work itself out, to be perfectly honest, because, and especially this year is probably a little more cumbersome because of our quick departure. But essentially, there, March 15th is the deadline for our certificated employees in terms of giving notice for potential layoffs. And we do need to notify all of our classified employees by April 30th, and so this board meeting is timely. In front of you, you have the resolution that is our standard boilerplate language, but really addresses the various classifications in which there is a recommendation to reduce. And aside from a couple of items, most of these are on this list specifically because prints, either PTOs have not funded positions yet and communicated that their wishes to us yet. So it's a timing problem. And also, some of these positions are intended to be funded with Measure U, which hasn't been brought to site councils. So, so that's why it's creating a list here. We're intending actually to bring back most, if not some, of these positions, except for the storeroom keeper. The storeroom keeper is a position in which there was a need to reduce because we went from 16 schools to 12, and there doesn't need to be the number of deliveries and so forth as we originally intended. So management in that area decided that this was no longer a position, this .5 FTE that was in, that's in effect now for next year. The bilingual Spanish position is a position in which it's a vacancy right now, and so that is no longer needed. And then also the bilingual Mandarin instructional assistants, the PTO, that's a PTO-funded position typically, and the PTO has decided that they are reducing by that FTE. So there still will be some in effect, just not the total number needed for next year based on the configuration that they're choosing to fund. The instructional assistant is from Orion and Cloud. And once again, it has to do with funding sources not being confirmed yet. And then the campus supervisor, this is a position in which MIT will need to reduce their campus supervisor position and is currently a vacancy at this point. So there are a couple of people that actually will be affected, and yet I'm hoping we will have jobs available for them to apply for into the future. But for the most part, most of these positions are a result of the fact that letters of intent or funding sources have not been able to be confirmed yet. So what happens is, is that we have a duty based on ed code to notify by a certain date. And so what we've done, and what we'll likely do this year and what we've done in the past is need to inform the employees, but then hopefully bring them back right away. It's an uncomfortable process, I'm not going to lie, but at the same time, based on ed code, that is the requirements in which we have to follow. So that is the reason I'm bringing this resolution to you tonight to approve. Are there any questions?
If there's no questions, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
This is Dennis, second.
That was Maria and Dennis. If we can have a roll call vote, please.
Jesse McBride?
Aye.
Jesse Marquez?
Aye.
Jesse Diaz-Loco?
Aye.
Jesse McAvoy?
Aye.
Jesse Lawson?
Aye. Well, that brings us to the end of our agenda. So thank you to the members of the audience that did come out to, now with us tonight. We appreciate having you here. I know we had some tech issues in the beginning and we'll try to work that out for our next meeting. Our next meeting will be next week on April 2nd at 7:00 PM. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Cecilia?
A second.
Alisa, I think we can do a voice vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll see you next week.
Thank you, Janet, for leading us through.